Okay, the committee on finance and law will come to order. Roll call, Dr. DeMello.
Present.
Mr. Enos.
Present.
And Mr. Fiori is present. We have no student activities to report on tonight. Uh, next item is we have a third quarter Americas of Disability Act update. Mr. Cabral or Mrs. Moynihan?
So the city does require quarterly updates from each department in the city about what they have done to, um, to take off of the ADA listing that was cited in their report. And as you know, that, um, we've been working with our director of facilities, Mark Freitas, who's been working with, uh, facilities and has taken off, um, another item off of the ADA list that was the responsibilities of Taunton Public Schools. And what that was is that he worked with the building department to provide one bench with back support in the boys' and girls' locker rooms at Parker Middle School. So as you can see that, that it is, um, there's a picture on that in the back of this memo for you. And then also, another thing that I want to bring into, uh, bring to note is earlier this month, I asked for clarification from ADA, uh, the ADA person at, um, the city, Kevin Scanlon, I just had a memory, sorry, Kevin Scanlon, and-
Most of us can't forget that name.
Okay, yes. Um, and so I asked for clarification on the Taunton Alternative High School, um, item, and it was originally slated in the chart below for the responsibility of Taunton Public Schools. But, um, what happened was that Kevin Scanlon stated that that would be something that needed to be done by the DPW. So I notified Catherine Noons from the DPW on April 12th, and she responded that she would review the DPW and would review it with the DPW and follow up. So I revised the chart below, uh, right there in the memo, to reflect that one less item for Taunton Public Schools, that is, the responsibility of Taunton Public Schools, and added that, um, not under the scope of Taunton Public Schools. So we still have currently outstanding items for the responsibility of Taunton Public Schools, three, 38 of them, and the remaining 427 are under the, um, scope of other departments and not, again, not the responsibilities for Taunton Public Schools.
Motion to receive and placed on file.
Uh, second on discussion. Mr. Chairman? Thank you. So for the public at home to better understand, um, responsibility of Taunton Public Schools versus DPW, uh, is there a way to better explain, because there's been some chatter in the past where we're not doing our obligation to be, you know, ADA compliant? And when they throw out a number such as 465 ADA items that remain outstanding, uh, Taunton Public Schools is only really responsible for 38. So when do those items get taken care of? So, you know, those 427 items that are not under our scope of service, what's the process on that?
So each, as I said, that each department has a quarterly update. So if it's the DPW, let's say the DPW, and it is aligned with the school department. So in this, in this one here, it was on the road itself. So what happens is that when the DPW does that work, and again, it did look like it was Taunton Public Schools, but it wasn't, they would report that item on their ADA quarterly update, and that would be removed from their list.
Okay. So it's not, we, we can't say we need this done in a timely manner because we, we don't have no jurisdiction over the timely manner, right?
Correct.
Gotcha. Okay. Yeah, again, I just want to reinforce the public at home that we're not just sitting here not doing what we're supposed to be doing because, you know, we want to make sure that everyone is, is, is treated, you know, with what the needs are to be needed.
I can report on something with, with another city department, too. Um, because I take advantage of handicap access because I use a walker because I have balance issues. Um, it took about six months for the building department to be able to address the handicap entrance to the Taunton Public Library. Um, they had trouble getting parts for the door, and of course, they also had to stack that up with all the other things they had to do with other, other city buildings. So I, I know what, what delays are taking place because I had to walk up steps at the library a couple of times. And then also, a lot of other people had that issue.
So we're doing our part.
Absolutely.
Wonderful. Thank you, Mrs. Moynihan. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Remember, you also allocated, the committee also allocated-
Twenty-five thousand. Yeah, twenty-five thousand that we also-
At the next report, um, the next time we do an update for the ADA, I'll also provide an update to the school committee for, um, the, the amount that, of twenty-five thousand, what we're planning on doing with that.
Wonderful. Thank you. I did second that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, so voted. The next item is, uh, the bill payable warrant, uh, one for fiscal year 22, which is the amount of $10,407. All of them are, uh, invoices for reimbursement for courses for, for faculty members. Again, they, we've had discussions about this before. They often take a while to process, and so they're still coming up this late in the fiscal year. And then, uh, warrant for, uh, regular expenses in the amount, for fiscal 23, in the amount
Mr. Chairman, I'd kindly request that we separate these two out because I have two, two discussion points, please.
Okay. Um, first on fiscal 22.
Motion to approve 22's warrant.
Chair seconds.
Second on the motion for discussion.
Yeah.
I am voting no on FY 22.
All right, um, all those in favor?
Yes.
Aye. All those opposed?
Aye.
So voted.
Just a point of information, Mrs. Moynihan.
Just so you are aware, FY 22 has now been closed. We have a zero, zero balance of any more encumbrances, so the entire budget has been expended.
Now for fiscal 23, $1,763,251.70.
Motion to approve FY 23 warrant.
Second on discussion.
Dr. DeMello.
Mr. Chairman, on page three, I kindly respect that I be recorded as voting present on voucher number, well, PO number 2303182, in the amount of $18,000 to Bridgewater State University, where I have my job at, my full-time job at, so I'd be recorded present.
Okay, and I will ask to be recorded as present on, uh, voucher from the Taunton Rotary Club. It's going to be an ongoing thing because, um, uh, Mr. Holcomb recently joined the club, and he gets reimbursed for, for dues and other expenses from there. So I'll, I'll ask to be present on that because I'm a, I'm a member of the club.
If I could just clarify, too, I believe it's a corporate membership, so you will be seeing other principals, uh, principals in addition to Principal Holcomb attending those Rotary meetings.
Good.
The maker of the motion kindly amend the motion, please, to include the two.
It's part of the motion.
Great. Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing all the favor, second by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. All those opposed, so voted. And, uh, next item is the facilities update. Uh, again, Mrs. Moynihan.
In your packet, you will see a memo, um, to both the superintendent and I, from our director of facilities, Mark Freitas. And at the recent long-range planning committee meeting, members suggested that we contact an architect to suggest what TPS should use to replace the missing flashing that is, um, missing at the alternative high school. So, um, Mr. Freitas met with Compass Group architects at the alternative high school and went to inspect the current flashing on the school building. And what happened was Mr., um, the architect ended up suggesting keeping the copper rain screen on and building an angled roof over the existing copper. He also mentioned that leaving the copper, existing copper adds another layer of protection against the elements. He believes that the copper rain screen was an afterthought and may have had some issues in the past of water penetrating in the brick area above the cornice detail. So you'll see that in the, as, uh, another picture in your, um, in your packet as well.
Mrs. Moynihan, if I could interrupt, I appreciate your enthusiasm. Unfortunately, that item was listed on the unfinished business during the regular meeting.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So that'll be covered there, because members do not have that in their packet.
I apologize.
Okay, so I, I think the next item regarding facilities was the facility dude work order memo.
And that was in the wrong, and I apologize. You are correct. Sorry about that. Um, and I apologize. That work order is, again, a memo from the, um, it's memo from the director of facilities, and it is the work facility, facility dude work order. So facility dude, as you, uh, may be aware, it's the city's building, maintenance, and software that both city and the school staff enter any facility issue that needs to be addressed. So attached, you will find the facility dude report listing the year-to-date work order comparison. In this, in this report, you'll see it from July 1st, 2022, through April 24, 2023. The total amount of work orders entered was just, um, under 2,200 work orders. Within the 2,200 work orders, the Taunton Public Schools occupied fif, uh, just under 1,600 work orders, which is 69% of all work orders for this city's 58 buildings. And then at the bottom of the chart that Mr. Freitas provided is all the work orders, opened and closed, entered per school. And going further, Mr., um, Mr. Freitas will be providing us or the committee an update of facility dude work orders monthly.
Received and placed on file.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, so voted. Um, next we have a bid award on, uh, heating, ventilation, and air conditioning.
In your packet, again, you'll see that, um, Taunton Public Schools was awarded the indoor air quality grant for the amount of $1.4 million. And on April 5th, Taunton Public Schools received two bids for the HVAC replace and repair project at Letty Preschool, Bennett Elementary School, and Martin Middle School. We received two bids. The first one was general air conditioning and heating from Dorchester. Their bid was $2.2 million, and Jim Dorsey and Sons, their bid was, um, $1.2 million. I am recommending awarding the HVAC bid to Jim Dorsey and Sons as they have met all the bid requirements and are the lowest, most responsible bidder.
Mr. Chairman, port of information. Uh, Mrs. Moynihan, if you can just kindly restate the first contractor, you mentioned Dorchester, but that's not the name, just for the public at home.
General air conditioning and heating from Dorchester, Mass. Sorry.
That's better. Thank you so much. Motion to, uh, accept the recommendation of Mrs. Moynihan, Assistant Superintendent for Finance and Operations, to award the bid to Jim Dorsey and Sons in the amount of $1,270,000.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, second by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. All those opposed, so voted.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Good evening. The first regular ma, meeting of the Taunton School Committee should come to order. Please stand for the pledge and national anthem.
(Singing) Oh, say, can you see by the dawn's early light? What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight? O'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there? Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave? O'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
Secretary Fagan, Julie's in prayer.
Lord, as we begin this session, let us acknowledge your goodness and mercy and ask your blessings on all our deliberations. We thank you for this opportunity to be of service to our community and to the young people entrusted to our care. And I'd like, uh, the committee to please, uh, keep standing while we do, um, we have a person that we'd, we'd like to give a moment of silence to. That individual is William Bagley, fondly known as Bill of Holbrook, Massachusetts, who passed away peacefully last month at the age of 97 years old. He was married to his wife for over 60 years, and his life was punctuated by selfless acts of community service, as it says in his obituary. He's, he, not only did he play three sports in high school, football, basketball, and baseball, he continued to play baseball on the AAU teams from Holbrook. He's also one of the oldest living veterans in Holbrook, having served with the U.S. Navy in the Pacific Theater. He also owned an oil company and the W.E. Bagley and Sons Fuel Company, as well as Energy Center. And he was, he sponsored a Little League team, and he was the, one of the founding members of the youth hockey club in Holbrook. He was also a passionate and loyal member of the Holbrook Rotary Club, who had a stretch of 50-plus years of perfect attendance, but he was there for over 60 years. He spearheaded the effort to bring the first doctor to the town of Holbrook, and as a Rotarian, he always made sure families had food for Thanksgiving and for Christmas. And even as a senior, he still was giving time to his community. He survived by three sons and three daughters, one of whom is our own Susan Bullock, who is the head bookkeeper for the Taunton Public Schools. Um, he also leaves as, as a legacy of a long life, 16 grandchildren, 27 great-grandchildren, and one great-grandchild, as well as a multitude of nieces and nephews. Please keep this family and your thoughts and prayers. A moment of silence, please. Thank you. And I'll do the roll call for you.
Thank you, Secretary Fagan. Yes, please, roll call.
Okay. Mr. Pulowski?
Present.
Mr. Enos?
Present.
Mr. Fiori?
Present.
Mrs. Fagan is present. Mr. Viera?
Present.
Mr. George?
Present.
Mr. Laura?
Present.
And Dr. DeMello, chairman.
Present. Uh, next item up, approval of minutes, March 15th, March 29th, April 5th, April 6th, April 18th, 2023.
Motion to approve.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Uh, Mrs. Fagan?
Um, I do not believe I was here on the 15th. I think that was the meeting, that I, I was absent for that meeting, but I was for all the others, so just, I can't vote on that meeting.
Okay, so the motion will be amended to reflect that you were absent on March 15th?
Yes.
So all in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Eyes happy. Thank you. Next up, we have the Student Advisory Committee report. Tonight, we have with us Isaiah Wendell. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. As Mr. Chair said, my name is Isaiah Wendell, and I am on the Student Advisory Committee for Taunton High School. There are a few things going on in Taunton High School lately. Um, junior prom is coming up, May 19th. We're getting towards the end, end of the school year, along with senior prom on May 31st. Uh, starting today, I saw that caps and gowns were being handed out to our seniors for the 2023 graduating class. Yesterday, Tues, Tuesday, AP testing began, which will continue in the coming weeks. Also to add on that, for the first time in history, we have had the most enrollments in AP classes at Taunton High School this year. Which was great to hear. I, I know, I wished everybody who is testing and will be testing the best of luck. Additionally, three new security guards were hired at Taunton High School lately. I have gotten the chance to meet some of them. They're all great people, doing well in the building. They're assisting, um, school admin and school staff with gathering students to be in the right places at the right times, preventing skipping and, um, congregating during, uh, transition times and during class. Uh, recently, Pro Start has, uh, they competed, and some of the students, uh, that participated will be going to Nationals, which is a great success for them and Taunton High School. Eighth-rate MCAS has been lately. I, I, that was, that's doing great. I heard that there was good attendance with that, students coming in, uh, testing, and they've been doing a great job with that throughout the building with the help of administration, teachers, security, all across the board. That is all I have for today. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Wendell. That's plenty of information, especially the news about the AP enrollments, which is something that we don't really hear about, and it's always nice to hear. Mr. Fiori?
Thank you. What's particularly impressive about the AP enrollments is that one of the arguments that was made over the years for the block scheduling, which we recently abandoned, was because it was best to accommodate AP, and yet, now that we've moved away from it, the AP enrollment is up higher than ever, and that's a great thing.
Excellent. Anyone else? Thank you, Mr. Wendell. Look forward to seeing you at our next meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night. Next up, we have the Taunton Public Schools curriculum implementation update. I'll turn it over to Superintendent Cabral.
Thank you, Dr. DeMello. So it's usually around this time of year where we like to make the school committee members aware of the work that is taking place and how our investments in high-quality instructional materials are being implemented throughout the school department. So I'd like to invite Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum Instruction, Mr. Barata, to provide you with a quick update on where we are, where we stand as far as the implementation or the adoption of the high-quality instructional materials that we have provided our staff, as well as provided our students and caregivers. So with that being said, Mr. Barata, the floor is yours.
Well, first off, good evening, everyone. Uh, thank you very much for allowing me to come forward today to give a spring update in terms of what Superintendent Cabral mentioned, the curriculum implementation of multiple content areas that have taken place across the district across multiple years. First, I want to draw your attention to the quote by John Cotton Dana, "Who dares to teach must never cease to learn." And that is basically the root of our work here in Taunton Public Schools. As I start off with the first slide of the acknowledgements, we cannot implement anything in Taunton Public Schools to be effective without engaging our talented classroom educators. And when I mean classroom educators, I'm talking about general educators, special educators, and our educational assistants, who sometimes get lost in the shuffle, not understanding that they're actually at times delivering content to students in small groups and facilitating other type of support mechanisms. And even now, we've mentioned from Mr. Wendell talking about MCAS testing, sometimes they assist in MCAS testing as well. Our instructional coaches, our principals, assistant principals, our K-12 curriculum directors, 812 curriculum supervisors, our external partners, and the initials there, DESE is Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, SSOS is the statewide system of support, who provides us as partnerships, uh, collegial relationships with the state, uh, progress monitoring of the activities we're taking place, allowing us to tap into their resources at state level. So it's very much not a punitive relationship, but more of a total collaboration. TNTP stands for the New Teacher Project, which is a national organization that works with multiple districts across the straight, uh, states, uh, streamlining a lot of work in terms of systems development, goes hand in hand with what SSOS does as well. And of course, we have a bevy of consultants that we've, uh, engaged through the use of our grants. Susan Looney with Math, Confianza, which is our L-population. Uh, we also have mental health grants, which we're accessing not only local community access, but also statewide partners. So we do, uh, access a lot of consultants who quite often come in and affirm the hard work that we acknowledge is taking place in our own district, but it's always nice to hear outsiders coming and saying, yes, you're on track, you're doing great work here. And more importantly, and finally, this school committee, who supports us in our curriculum revisions, uh, making the difficult decisions about funding, what we should allocate our fundings for, and of course, our community at large, who's always supportive, who trusts us and trusts us with their children each day to educate them. Going through our district priorities, which all of you have seen, uh, previously, in terms of our school improvement plans and our district improvement plan, priority one, the district will strengthen tier-one instruction, which will support teaching and learning through differentiated grade-appropriate instructional experiences that are purposeful, engaging, and equitable. Equitable is a term that gets thrown around a lot and misconceived. We view as equitable as meaning every student in Taunton Public Schools will be provided with high-quality instructional materials as a baseline. Priority two, the district is developing and strengthening tier-one social-emotional systems of support to address the needs of our students, their families, and our educators. At the conclusion of this presentation, we're going to refer back to our district priorities because with another year, we're doing some refinement. We're not discarding our work this year, we're actually enhancing it. High-quality instructional materials, Taunton Public Schools is committed to providing educators with the resources that facilitate authentic learning opportunities and thoughtful learning sequences and assessments. This is the heart of curriculum, right? Well-written, standards-based instructional materials, every child has access to. All these materials are highly rated by not only educators within the state, but on the national level. When you hear of Ed Reports, and I know I'm repeating myself from prior presentations along with Superintendent Cabral, Ed Reports is a national clearinghouse that rates materials that vendors submit their materials to, where you have, uh, consultants review those materials and rate them in terms of standards, adaptability, comprehensiveness. We've had the pleasure, or the honor, actually, of one, uh, director, K-12 Director of STEM, Elizabeth Pulowski, was actually a reader for Ed Reports at another time. We've had actually other, uh, content lead people in the district who've actually have done that work as well. So when we hear of new materials coming in, the connection with Taunton, we actually have people who have worked on some of those screening committees. And of course, at the state level, it's called curate, where we have Massachusetts educators piloting materials and then providing their input at the state. So it's that interconnectivity of national and state educators looking at our work, looking at the curriculum materials, and determining is of high quality. We'll delve a little bit into the content areas of mathematics. We are now in year two of the implementation of illustrative math, K through 12. We can affirm the fact that 100% of our classrooms are implementing IM with integrity. That means staying close as possible to the way that the curriculum was designed. This doesn't mean our work will end, because we still have our visiting teams with internally, with not only, I guess you'd say, educational leaders, district level, building levels, but also our coaches, and actually, our teachers now doing collegial visits, visits accompanied by our consultants. So now we've progressed to the stage of, I guess you'd say, building leaders, district leaders, walking in classrooms, affirming the fact it's taking place. Now we're digging a little deeper and cross-pollinating our classrooms, providing opportunities for our teachers to go into other rooms and see the work that's being done, so they can go back into their, their own classrooms and replicate those practices. And of course, we have our SSOS and TNTP collaborative walkthroughs as well, with, uh, a walking tool where we calibrate what we see before we go into, what we're going to look for, and then come out, and we debrief, did we see what we thought we saw? Um, and then we'll report out to our staff. Embedded professional development, our instructional coaches, uh, provide this through grade-level meetings. Looney Consulting has done a lot of consulting, not only grade-level meetings, uh, we're going to actually transform that, we'll see later on in slides of what that will look like next year. Again, going into year three, we should change and not keep things as it is. We actually had a national speaker come in, Steve Leinwald, from, it's called AIR, the American Institute for Research. A phenomenal math leader, who earlier this year spoke with, worked with our high school staff, and our high school staff, hard-working, content-driven individuals, perhaps our most difficult audience when we first implemented IM, because it was a radical change in which they delivered instruction, absolutely loved his presentations, has been in the district twice, and they continue to reach out to him via email because it makes himself accessible. Earlier this year, we actually had him meet with our middle school math teachers, knowing there has to be that connectivity. Phenomenal. I'm saying that based upon when I sat in some of those meetings and people coming out and reaching out to them and saying, I still want to contact with him. A great asset for Taunton Public Schools, because it affirms the fact that what we're doing here isn't a fad, isn't a one-off, it's really great work that's taking place. Science, year two of Open SIEED, uh, for six through eight, with Piloting High School, year eight, McGraw-Hill for grade five. Mystery science kits have been purchased and used in K-4, and year one, which is really exciting, elementary and engineering- which is really exciting, elementary and engineering, pre-K and K. Going back to the part of, are we seeing what is actually taking place? Are we seeing it with our eyes? Our walkthroughs, 100% affirmation, we're implementing various science resources. Again, we'll see here about our visiting teams, OEI, NSTA, and standard work accountability walks. Again, that's all outside consultants, nationally recognized or state-recognized, coming in, using it, and saying, you are doing a fantastic job. Kudos to your staff who've jumped in and taken this, especially come off of COVID. Professional development opportunities, we have district-wide PLCs, professional learning communities, DESI and Open Siad Equitable Instruction Initiatives through Boston College, Nexus, the leadership support, and again, I'll point out the fact that the school committee gave support for Elizabeth Palowski, myself, Jordan Valloy, Anne Gugliamo, Tony Bransky, to attend those national conferences, going back again in the spring in Chicago, where we actually meet with, our closest partner is Boston, and our furthest is New Mexico. So, again, that national collaboration of what is taking place, and it is encouraging to hear that when we go in our breakout groups and we dipstick about where other people are, to realize how far we are ahead, which is good, which is really good. Again, we talk about the Nexus leadership, the Open Siad National Facilitator Trainers, we have four in district now, going to that train, the trainer model, which may possibly mean that we won't be sending so many staff off-site for training, which is cost savings, but we're actually building the capacity within the district to share our knowledge without having to go outside. And of course, the National Science Teaching Association distinction, again, on national level, which I know Superintendent Cabral mentioned last night at the school committee meeting, that there'll be some further information going about that and great news about what is really taking place in our science areas here. English Language Arts, year four implementation of Study Sync, that's grade six through 12, year three with a huge asterisk, and implementation of Wonders, K through five. That asterisk there is, remember, we, we piloted back in 1819, the Wonders materials, that was actually the 2017 edition, that was rated not as highly as the 2020. Superintendent Cabral made a strategic decision not to adopt that, where others, other districts did, and then said, well, we'll backfill those resources to make sure it's high-quality. We paused, purchased the 2020, but this also happened in the middle of COVID. So, the procedures and strategies and systems that we put in place to effectively roll out illustrative math and Open Siad wasn't provided to Wonders, because things shut down. We have since applied for it, and we will be receiving a grant, a high-quality implementation grant for English Language Arts, which we're going to be partnering with Education First to do a landscape analysis of our materials and how they're being used by our staff. Knowing that we quite honestly gave it to them, here, run with it, and they've been adjusting as best as they can on the ground, we're actually going to do a thorough analysis of all the materials, how they're being used, how differently can be used, because there's many different facets to the program. And they're also going to be, we're also going to be looking here down to bottom, collaborate with our educator teams to identify and rectify any alignment issues, standard, and most important, the writing prompts. The district has done a very good job of trying to position our students to be successful, whether it's on AP exams or MCAS exams. And sometimes we look at the curriculum alignment, and we move units around to better prepare them for March, which happens to be the month of ELA assessments, and then afterwards, catch up with those units we moved. Not sure that's the greatest idea, because we, although we are preparing our students for MCAS, it disrupts the flow of learning throughout the year. And is it better to go with the curriculum that's designed throughout the year, or is it to move some parts? Granted, there will be no way we can go through every standard and every unit that any curriculum goes, so we have to do that work on the ground. That's where we trust our teachers of, okay, let's meet, let's review, what do we need to move now? We're going to go through that analysis, and definitely our focus is on writing. Again, we're going to see that later on in the slides. Social Studies, year one implementation of civics in grade eight, outstanding opportunity that dovetails in with the schedule change at the high school. It's a full-year course in eighth grade. We've tapped into the resources and grants to purchase iCivics, which is rolling out now, which actually came onboard in January, due to the transition over into some history classes. We're now teaching civics, starting in January, for the rest of the year. Next year will be full-year civics, and they're actually reaching out now because of civics projects, which is a requirement. I've gotten some emails from outside agencies saying, is this an accurate request? Because high school students are reaching out and saying, I have these certain questions, and these people reaching out to me, is this legitimate? A student going on? Absolutely, they're doing part of their civics projects. And Mr. Gillen is doing a great job up there ruling that out. Pilot years right now in grades five through seven, Investigating History is a curriculum written in concert with the Department of Elementary and Secondary Ed, and McGraw-Hill in grade five and sevens. Realistically, McGraw-Hill is the textbook. Investigating history is aligned with the inquiry model of education, which aligns in terms of design and assessments with Open Siad and illustrative math. What's unique about Investigating History is that next year, and I will say we're applying for a grant, we're going to be submitted May 12th. Next year, they're going to be rolling out whether or not you can purchase additional licenses for the illustre, I'm sorry, Investigating History, along with print materials, but more importantly, they're providing funding for content-based professional development. That would be key in grades five and six, in that they're generalists as elementary instructors, seventh grader, more context-specific with their licensure. But in the long haul, when they build out Investigating History in the elementary level and provide that professional development in the content, that will assist our teachers, who are generalists in content knowledge of social studies, that'll make our Investigating History potentially more robust. I think I spoke a lot to that. I apologize. But just to let you know, we talked about that first slide about teachers learning to learn. Six educators are piloting that Investigating History. Nineteen educators are piloting textbooks. Again, they're learning, they're continuing to grow. Social-emotional learning, this is year two, the implementation of Mind Up. Adjustments were made out of year one based upon educator feedback. There was a whole community input team that came to the consensus that Mind Up was going to be the curriculum. The beginning of this year, based upon last year's survey of teachers, wanted more resources or more defined lesson plans. That work was done by teachers over the summer, and they developed a September-December curriculum for Mind Up. You can say, well, what happens with the rest of the month, right? Holidays become stressful and everything else, what's going to? The idea that actually aligns with the release of the CELUS data, which is the, the assessments, which we, part of the mental health grant, that we assess all students, look at their competencies, their five areas of where their strengths and areas of need are. The intent is, by December, you'll see that information, then with a data dive, looking at what students need what, they can go back in and review those lessons that were administered in September or December, and/or access online resources aligned with Mind Up that can address the specific needs of whether it's a group or individual students in the area. Again, we're going to continue to look at that and refine it as we go forward, because we're in the early stages of understanding and recognizing what that CELUS data can provide individual educators, our guidance counselors, our adjustment counselors, our school psychologists. And as I mentioned before, the original priorities, the district, priority one, the tier-one instruction, our focus area next year, grade three through five, running across every discipline. English Language Arts, Social Studies, we have a new Humanities Director, Danielle Kirk. This also impacts math and science. There is a correlation between those elementary schools who performed well last year on the MCAS writing component and the responses in math and constructed responses. Now, granted, you need to have the math content knowledge to answer, but we're trying to examine, was the hard work done in writing carry over into math? Obviously, it'll play out in social studies, short responses in science as well. We think that's a high-leverage area that we're going to be attacking this year, while we simultaneously continue on our hard work in math. And of course, in priority two, the social-emotional component, we're going to affirm now through classroom visitations and observations that 100% of our classrooms are implementing Mind Up in the, in the rooms. We're also going to provide additional professional development and make sure we know that all our teachers have at their fingertips those resources, those additional resources that were put out there. But I'm not sure my office did a good enough job of linking the teachers and say, do you realize you have these resources here where you could tap in there? And of course, we're collaborating with the high school, an alternative high school, utilizing purpose prep, which is the social-emotional component. Prior to the schedule change, there was an advisory, we thought we could plug that in, and it'd be common lessons across the board, tapping into the district mental health teams, but also the high school mental health teams, examining ebbs and flows of students' behaviors, and then cross-referencing certain lessons. But we're going to actually pay a lot more attention, working with Principal Holcomb and his team, about, and Bert Delaney, how best we can support our students in there with social-emotional learning. That actually concludes my presentation.
Great.
Any questions?
Mr. Barata, thank you so much. I know that Mr. Fiore is an expert in curriculum. I'll start with you, if you have any questions, comments?
Well, I'm glad to see emphasis being put on the growth in the faculty, as well as the students. I speak as someone who passed the Massachusetts bar at 25 and passed the HUD Counselor Certification at 65, and like to see the rest of our system behave the same way.
Thank you. Members, Mr. Polski?
Thank you, Dr. DeMello. Thank you, Mr. Barata, for the, the great presentation. I know you all have put a lot of work into this, obviously, over the years. My question is, when, when the district has decided to implement a curriculum like, you know, Wonders or Mind Up, obviously, it's after a lot of vetting and piloting and testing and investigation and comparing to other, other options. So, you guys make that, that decision to implement it. And of course, everybody's got opinions, right? We all do. So, I imagine a lot of your educators, many, many of them probably don't agree with the curriculum, or don't like it, or don't think it works, yet the district chose to go with it, so it's kind, it's their job to implement it with fidelity, as you said. So, what do you, what do you guys do to try to bring in all those educators, particularly the ones that might, you know, disagree with it? What do you do to bring them in and really get them on board and, yeah?
That's a, that's a great question. You're right. There is a process in which we vet curriculum, but ultimately, when a decision is made, people have to follow suit, and that's responsibility. And I would, I'll, I have to credit our educators, who have understood that. Now, just because I say I'm going to follow it, doesn't mean they can do it effectively, right? Because there's some hurdle that they can't, that potentially can't overcome. And that work comes down with a lot of classroom visitations, conversations, professional development, and sitting down saying, why isn't, right? And that is at the root of why we conduct walkthroughs. Not so much of as a gotcha, because it's coming out and saying, okay, why, why didn't we see this here? What can we provide staff to support them? You know, no one wakes up, there isn't a TEA member or TESA member who, whatever, bargaining, who wakes up in the morning and says, today's the day I'm going to be the defiant one. It's one of those, okay, how can we help? They want to be helped. And we can do that through those walkthroughs, through those conversations, and ultimately, if you provide enough resources and people don't, don't buy in, then those are the more difficult conversations, which the district is becoming better at, about saying, then maybe the choice should be made somewhere else. And there's always ultimately the evaluation tool. But again, we use, I would hope, every administrator in this district uses the evaluation tool as an opportunity for growth, rather than gotcha.
Thank you, Ms. Polski. Ms. Delora, you want to go next?
I just wanted to just piggyback on Mr. Barata's comment. Another very important factor in helping staff to buy in and understand the importance of the curriculum is other staff members who piloted the curriculum and have been very successful and have demonstrated growth, or have data to demonstrate that the curriculum, when implemented with fidelity, is very successful. And I know we've had those conversations about championing those teachers, or have, or providing coverage for teachers who, to go to other schools and visit and see it in action, so that they can see, oh, this is how it's done, this is how small groups should look, so that they can bring it back and implement in their buildings as well. So, celebrating our champion teachers as well.
Thank you, Superintendent. Ms. Delora?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Barata, the collaboration of all these different disciplines, is there one or two more, more disciplines that are advanced in techniques and the training methods applied? What I'm saying is, math and science seems to be well-advanced as far as their techniques. Science and social studies need more revision or more tools and resources? Is that fair to say?
Can I take a stab at this one?
Sure.
So, I think what Mr. Delora is getting at, getting down to is the pedagogy. We're seeing a shift in pedagogy from a sage on a stage, so to speak,
Yep.
A lot of drill and kill, a lot of lecturing, to more an inquiry-based model, more putting students at the forefront of their learning. So, I think you pretty much summed it or nailed it as far as Open Siad and illustrative math being very inquiry-based, very student-centered. Wonders, well, I'll let Mr. Barata take it from here.
So, so those, those particular curriculum were written with that in mind. We were inquiry-based, designed through that, and tested and rolled out. Investigating history is going that way. This is where the creativity or the understanding of shift in pedagogy. So, some are on the assumption of, because you, you purchase a new curriculum, student outcomes is going to be direct correlation, it's going to happen like that. There's a lot of work in implementing a new curriculum. And that changed not only for the student, because I think we can recall stories, I think the superintendent talked about his own daughters coming home and saying, what is with this math? And then after a month or so, saying, now it's clicking in. It takes time. I have certain pattern in life, you know, I think we all do. We wake up, we certainly drive away, we grab a coffee, and all of a sudden something veers, and we have our routines. Our educators have routines baked in. At times, they've been extremely successful. Other times, we're coming up against stuff where students aren't as successful anymore. It's because a lot of, the game has changed a little bit. And shifting the practices of our educators is difficult and takes time. And there are a lot of people making some hard work and some hard changes. It just happens to be that we have that high-quality curriculum that compels the educator to change their practices to implement it effectively. And that is why the district is going only high-quality curriculum material, because we do not want to put out a resource out there that doesn't challenge our educators, and more importantly, doesn't challenge our students to become critical thinkers. So, this material sets the stage where there is no other option but to challenge both the educator and the child to change the way we think and to change the way we act within the classroom.
Thank you. Very well.
Thank you, Mr. Delora. Anyone else?
Thank you.
Mr. Barata, I'm, I'm very happy and satisfied with the update. I think that we're going to the right places. I mean, this is a Herculean effort to make sure that everybody's doing the right thing, and I know we have the support system in place, from leadership to the school committee, and wish our students well. So, thank you so much.
If I could just have one closing comment?
Sure, Mr. Superintendent.
I think, I think the piece that I really, that truly resonates with me is, you know, instilling in our students how to think critically. And critical thinking is needed more than ever in society today. So, allowing kids to be able to make decisions for themselves or inform decisions for themselves based on the information that they have at their fingerprints, or fingertips. And then the last piece, I would just like to commend Assistant Superintendent Barata and Assistant Superintendent Moynihan, because there has been collaboration when it comes to the curriculum. You're probably wondering, why am I involving the business office in the curriculum? Because I have charged them with, one, purchasing and implementing high-quality instructional materials in a way that is sustainable. So, the purchasing of the curriculum materials should position us very well for the next three to five years, where we will not be rolling out large sums of money, because we're utilizing our one-time grants, one-time funding, to purchase this curriculum, so that the school system can be in a position where we do not have to roll out seven digits to purchase new curriculum on a yearly basis or every other year. So, I feel we are very well-positioned, as far as the curriculum goes, because we've been very wise financially to position ourselves in a way where we are not making large investments, as we have made in the past, which is very difficult for districts like Taunton, urban school systems, to purchase high-quality instructional materials. Now, we have it across the board, and I'm, I'm very thankful for the Student Opportuny Act, as well as the Esso Dollars that have allowed us to do this.
Excellent. Mr. Delora, yes?
Superintendent. So, any particular materials that are purchased, and if they come into acquisition of additional materials, that's part of the purchasing power that is included in the price? So, if they come up with new materials or additional materials?
Yeah, a lot of the materials that we have are Yeah, a lot of the materials that we have are, are online and have licenses, but we've entered long-term agreements or short-term agreements to make sure that, and we've been able, through the procurement law, to be able to purchase these materials upfront for, for a three to five-year period.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Superintendent, you're up next. Superintendent's report.
Thanks. I'll try, I'll try to be quick. A lot of this is just information, and I'm always trying to be mindful of what you are asked when you're out in the public. So the first is just an update regarding preschool registration. So on Tuesday, March 26th, we officially kicked off pre-K registration at the James L. Mulcahy Elementary School for incoming pre-K students for the class of 2023, 2024. So overall, I heard the turnout was outstanding. So we are very excited that we have the Letty Preschool, as well as the additional classrooms at Chamberlain, East Taunton, and the James L. Mulcahy School. We also activated the kindergarten portal, so parents can begin registering their students for kindergarten, and I provided you with the dates. And for the public listening at home, Bennett today, the portal for, for kindergarten. Tomorrow, the portal opens for parents living or caregivers living in the Chamberlain District. Families living in the Mulcahy District, your portal opened on May 1st. Galligan opened on April 27th. E-Pole, April 25, April 25th. And last but not least, East Taunton Elementary School will open on May 18th. I also want to remind families at home that if you are not sure what district your child will be attending, or your child's home school or neighborhood school, you can go on the district's website, under the Families tab, when you click on the Families tab, there is a link that reads 2022, 2023 Street Listing. If you click on that link, it'll provide all the streets in the city of Taunton, find your address, and it'll list the elementary, middle school that your child is, your child's home school. So I just wanted to make the public aware. And again, if anyone, if you, any of the board members are asked this question in public, you can refer them to my office, or you can refer them to the, to the school's website. Also wanted to share with you the send-off dates. So just a reminder, Taunton Public Schools, we do not, we only have one graduation, and that's at Taunton High School and the Alternative High School. So I've also provided you with the send-off dates for our kindergarten students, I'm sorry, our pre-K students, and also for our middle schools. You'll notice that Friedman and Martin, they spread their send-off over two days, because they are large elementary schools. And Parker will hold their send-off on one day, which is June 15th. And this information will be sent home to families or the caregivers in the near future if it hasn't been sent home already. Also wanted to provide you with a quick update on the Edmund H. Bennett and City of Taunton sewer connection. I won't go into, into detail, but I, I will refer you to the four bullets regarding the construction timeline. So right now, the plan is to have the design plan completed by June 2023. The city anticipates the bid, the bidding process taking place during June and July, the contract being awarded in July, and then the construction beginning and ending sometime, starting in August and ending sometime in October of 2023. And we are very excited to have the Bennett Elementary School connected to sewer and off Septic in the very near future. So thank you to our partners on the city side, and I believe, Mr. Enos, you played a role in that, so thank you very much for your support. Last but not least, just want to give you three quick talking points. One point I added, so you do not have it in your packet, but I just wanted to share that we, our Future Educators Club and the African American Club visited Bridgewater State University and the STARS Symposium on April 27, 2023. STARS Symposium stands for Student Arts and Research Symposium. The students were greeted or treated to a lunch. And so I also want to commend Dr. Buckley, Liz Pawlowski, and Mr. Barata, and also Dr. DeMello for assisting in, assisting in organizing that trip for our students. I heard it was a great trip. Students learned a lot and enjoyed a great lunch. Also want to just make the committee aware, in case you have not had a chance to RSVP with me or with Mrs. Devine, we are going to have a Junior Achievement Kickoff Day here at E-Pole Elementary School on Tuesday, May 30th, from 9:15 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. Knowing that many of you work and have lives outside of the school committee, you're more than welcome to drop in at any time during the day. We are also going to have a small kickoff in the morning. So the small kickoff is being organized by Rebecca Reposa, who's our Director or Coordinator of Internships at the high school, as well as JA. So I'll send you that information, and hopefully you can attend the kickoff, because we also want to highlight some of the JA's work at the Taunton Alternative High School and the high school with their Business Challenge Program. We have two teams that are participating in the Business Challenge Program. And I think, I want, I think you are aware that last year, Taunton High won the challenge, and Taunton Alternative High School came in second place. So Taunton Public Schools is well represented. And last but not least, there's always confusion around the high school graduation date, so I thought I'd put it out there now. The Taunton High School graduation will be held on Sunday, June 4th, at 1:30 p.m. at Taunton High School. It will be indoors. And with that, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Superintendent. Any comments? I have a comment reverting back to the BSU visit with Chris Barata, Dr. Buckley, and Elizabeth Polsky. They reached out to me because in the past, this trip happens annually with the Future Educators, I believe, is in the African American Club. And I guess they wanted to have lunch integrated with students, an actual student population, instead of being in a conference room with a pizza party. And I said, if you could just pass me that flyer, and I said to both educators, Liz Pawlowski and Sarah Buckley, I said, why don't we participate in the STARS Symposium, which stands for Student Arts and Research Symposium? So our students actually had an opportunity to interact with students presenting posters, defending their, not dissertations, but their work, and actually sat in a presentation that Mr. Barata was part of, which was really high-level. It was really high-level, and in, in the room, we had everybody from the provost to academic deans that we were introduced to and exchanged handshakes and so forth. It was, it was a great day for me, as, not only as a school committee member, but as a, a part of the university. And it, it's things like this that motivate our students to pursue further education, to actually live it, you know, live it and act and, and eat it, basically, because they were eating everything else the other students were eating. So hats off to Mr. Barata, Ms. Pawlowski, and Dr. Buckley. What are the wishes of the committee? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Thank you, Superintendent. Next up, we have administrative business. In your packet, we have staffing report. What are the wishes?
Received and placed on file.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Next up, we have the TPS Teacher Vacancy Report, also in your packet. What are the wishes of the committee?
Yeah, I just want to comment, we had it down to eight, so we had it under single digits, but it's back up to 11, because we had to post, I think I shared with you in an email, that we had to post three EL positions. So, to accommodate what we anticipate will be an influx of students into the elementary, middle, and high school, so I just want to make you aware, we did have it on the single digits, but it's now it's back up to double.
Received and placed on file.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Next up, we have subcommittee reports. Chairman Fiore, Finance and Law.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Finance and Law Committee met earlier this evening with myself, Dr. DeMello, and Mr. Enos. We received a third-quarter update on compliance with the Americans with Disabilities Act by the school system. Most of our outstanding items are actually under the jurisdiction of the Building Department, but we did address at least one major project from our department and a couple of others in the pipeline. We then had bills payable, first fiscal '22 warrant in the amount of $10,400.07. That was all course reimbursements for faculty, and that was approved by two-to-one with Dr. DeMello in opposition. Then we had a fiscal '23 warrant in the amount of $1,763,251.70. Dr. DeMello was recorded as present on a, an invoice from his employer, Bridgewater State University. I asked to vote present on an invoice from the Taunton Rotary Club, where I'm on the board. Then we received a facilities report, talking about primarily work being generated or recorded by the facilities due, system that the city and the school department are now using to update, work that's done in our facilities. And finally, we had a bid review, and this is for a contract for heating, ventilation, and air conditioning, and the lowest responsible bidder was Taunton's own Jim Dorsey and son's plumbing contractor, and it was voted to approve the recommendation that Dorsey be hired, and then we adjourned.
Move recommendation is presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Next up, we have committee of the whole, and we have a few here, so that's me. Reverting to the April 6 meeting, we had a committee of the whole that took place here in these chambers. Topics of discussion were the solar-on schools presentation, that was presented to us by our Chief Financial Officer, Patrick De La Russo, and a gentleman by the name of Matthew Parent from Solar and Energy Consultants. And various discussions and options were made that evening, and the motion was moved that we allow the superintendent to have discussions with the Chief Financial Officer, Patrick De La Russo, and administration at Dayton Regional Rehoboth High School regarding solar canopies, and all members voted approval. That same evening, we also had a report from NESDEC, which is a New England School Development Council, and we had a few options that were presented to us as a committee, a lot of moving parts, if we recall, and no motions were made, and that was it for the evening of April 6. Next up, we had an April 12 committee of the whole. This was the third of our final series of community forums that took place at the Martin Middle School. We had a total of 17 audience participants, participants from citizens. We had our entire leadership team there, and every member of the school committee was also present. We heard from various constituents on various topics. Two of our very own that are in the audience here tonight were also there, and we took everything. I have cupius notes, and I know everybody else has notes, and this is ongoing with the superintendent and the leadership team. That was the night of April 12th, and the last committee of the whole was April 26th. And allow me just a second here. That was our budget workshop. How could we forget? That was four hours of deliberations of our budget, which was, really, really went by quickly. We were all contributed quite a bit, and for my sixth year on the school committee, there was input from each and every member that took some, you know, took it to heart. And the questions that were asked were really important to the success of our students and our, and our educators. And I really, really appreciate the deliberations that continued on that evening. We arrived at 100% net school spending, and as we were all present at city council last night, we heard from various, various city councilors that they support the recommendation of the mayor's office to support the schools with 100% net school spending, which we're very grateful for. And of course, that will be continuing deliberations with the city council going through the end of June, when the budget is approved by July 1st. And that's my report for the three committee of the whole.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Thank you. All ready? Next up, we have new business, and first, we have organizational subcommittee discussion. See enclosure.
So I can take this one, Dr. DeMello?
Please, Superintendent.
So we have a, we have a member on the TEA Subcommittee who can no longer serve on the TEA Subcommittee due to a family member being employed as an educator in our school system. So I would ask that if any member wishes to serve on the TEA Subcommittee, that you reach out to myself, Mrs. Devine, or Dr. DeMello. And if any member would like to nominate a colleague to serve on the TEA Subcommittee, again, reach out to myself, Mrs. Devine, or Dr. DeMello, and we'll bring this discussion back to the table at our next meeting, so that we can make sure we have three members who make up the TEA Subcommittee.
Superintendent, if I, I may ask, is there any pressing issues coming up with TEA with meetings?
There, there will be. We do have two scheduled meetings, but we can, well, with two members, we can continue to meet, because that does qualify as a quorum, but in the near future, we should identify the third member.
Okay, as long as we don't delay any proposed meetings with TEA?
It won't hold up any of our meetings. The biggest holdup with our meetings would be trying to align everyone's schedule.
Okay. So, please reach out for any interested member.
Or you want to nominate a colleague?
Or you want to name a colleague. Right now, the board consists of myself and Secretary Fagan. Okay? Thank you. Next up, we have unfinished business, action items update. First up, City of Taunton solar update. Superintendent?
So I won't bore you with all the details in the memo. That's in your packet. I think Dr. DeMello did a nice job summarizing the meeting, and also summarizing the motions that authorized me to meet with CFL De La Russo, and also to reach out to our neighboring community. So what I'll provide you with is what's, and I'll just summarize quickly what's in the packet. So in speaking with our neighboring committee, our neighboring school district, I apologize, they installed solar arrays or parking lot carports. They installed six of them at five of their schools. Each array, each port generates about 150 to 200 kilowatt-hours of electricity. One of the questions that I was directed to ask was, were there any out-of-pocket costs upfront? And the district stated that they did pay for the project outright upfront, and that they would, the part of this plan was very similar to the proposal that was shared with this group maybe a year or two ago, by the, I believe, I don't want to name the agency, but I think some of you remember the product that was proposed several years ago, where you pay for it upfront, and then you recoup the, you pay for it down the road with the savings on the, on the electricity that's saved, or on the RECs that are created. And RECs are renewable energy credits. So this school system installed their solar arrays about five or six years ago, and they believe that they'll be cost-neutral, cost-positive within the next one to two years. The super, I will add that the superintendent and the business manager had nothing but glowing things to say about the project and the outcome of the project, and they would highly recommend that we pursue this, and they also recommended working with a solar energy consultant, because so much has changed in the industry. So they advised that we do pursue this, but again, work with a solar industry consultant. On April 20th, I met with CFO Patrick De La Russo, and also in attendance was solar energy consultant Matthew Parent. He joined via Zoom. During the meeting, I shared with Mr. De La Russo, Mr. Parent, the concerns that were raised by the members of the committee, particularly the question regarding solar canopy systems in place of rooftop systems. Per industry standards, Mr. Parent advised against installing rooftop solar systems on roofs with less than eight years of life. So based on my quick analysis, three of the 12 schools do not meet the criteria if the city were to pursue rooftop, rooftop solar units, solar systems. However, Mr. Parent did mention that he has worked on roof replacement projects in conjunction with solar installation. They do the project at the same time. As a result, communities on average have been able to save about 30% on the roof replacement cost while also reaping the benefits of solar panels. So that is the information that I bring back to you. Based on everything that I heard from our neighbor up the road, and based on the information shared with Mr. De La Russo and Mr. Parent, I would advise that we continue to pursue this and pursue what we believe is in the best interest of the school department. Solar canopies are an option, so I want to stress, solar canopies are an option, but if you look at the final page, it does come at a cost. To install solar, solar canopies on our sites, it would probably add about 60% to the cost of the project. So this, the rooftop solar system that Mr. Parent and Mr. De La Russo presented, in total, came in just over $14.3 million. If you add 60% to each project, it comes in just under $23 million. And unfortunately, I wasn't able to work with Mr. De La Russo, in fairness to him and Mr. Parent, we weren't able to calculate what the RECs credit, REC credits would be, and what the reimbursement or the rebates at the federal and state level would be, but we do know that it is an additional cost of $8.6 million if the committee wishes to pursue it. And again, I would advise that we pursue some form of solar, whether it's rooftop, which we've heard the concerns, or if it's can- or if it's canopy, which is the preferred method, but if we go with the preferred method, there is going to be an additional cost of $8 million. So what is the wishes of the committee?
Yes, before you do that, Mrs. Fagan, can I have some input from Mr. Fury?
Well, let me, let me second the motions. There could be some discussion on it.
Good, seconded. Thank you.
Honestly, my point of view is I'm not looking at this as an economic savings project. I'm looking at it from the point of view that there's no question that probably by the year 2050, it will not be legal to use fossil fuels to generate electricity as they are now, which means that renewables like solar and wind and some of that are necessarily going to be the way of the future. And I think we need to do this. Plus, if you're talking in terms of roof replacement, I would think having an array on top of the roof would probably actually form another layer of protection, which would eventually extend the lives of our roofs and maybe strengthen them as well. So I think it's a good investment, but I'm not looking at it in terms of necessarily saving money. I'm looking at it, it's going to eventually be saving lives.
Any other discussion? So there's a motion on the floor, Secretary Fagan, to refer to Committee of the Whole, seconded by Mr. Fury. What are the wishes?
Talking about costs and as far as doing them on the roof, doing them on the land, you know, over enclosed structures. Are we talking, are all our schools, if repaired the roofs, will they withstand the weight of this equipment?
That's a question that I don't feel comfortable answering because I'm not an expert as far as the weight, and I think it would also require some exploration of our roofs. But I will say, in of the 12 schools, I believe three of them, Chamberlain, Friedman, and East Taunton. And I only reference East Taunton because East Taunton, I believe, as soon as the building was open, that roof was declared defective, and the company that installed the roof went out of business. But I know the Building Department, the city, has invested heavily in repairs over a course of years, so we would have to analyze where East Taunton is based on the repairs that have been made. But I do know Chamberlain and Friedman are nearing the end of their life expectancy. They have less than eight years left on their life of those roofs.
Thank you, and just one more question. If we go into this discussion for further discussion, do we have an opportunity to welcome other companies to offer a bid to our system?
Well, right now, we have the proposal from the city with CFL Delarussso. So maybe as part of our conversation with Committee of the Whole, maybe we invite Mr. Delarussso and Mr. Parent back. Or we have our Committee of the Whole meeting and then bring them back after the meeting. But it might be advantageous to have everybody at the table so that the questions that I can't answer can be answered by the experts and the people who are overseeing the project or want to oversee the project.
Yeah, I recommend, Mr. Enos?
Keep in mind, this project would have to be bid regardless. So it's, you wouldn't give it to anyone, it would have to be bid to the thirty bay.
Good point. Thank you.
Yeah, I recommend that before the next Committee of the Whole meeting, that the motion is on the floor, that we all come up with a list, send it to the superintendent, and maybe we can have them answered in advance so when we do meet, we'll have some answers, if it's possible.
And I, and I'm sorry, and I apologize, Ms. Laura. I was confusing companies doing the work with consulting's, consultants supporting the process, so I confused the two. Sorry.
Ms. Pawlski?
Thank you, Dr. DeMello. Just a quick question regarding this Committee of the Whole meeting. Would it be appropriate or possible to bring in representatives of TMLP to weigh in on the options?
I would hold off on that, just, and I'll leave it at that. There's other discussions going on. Before we can get to this project, the landfill project has to be established first before we can go forward to the other projects.
Okay, so we're at a motion, and it's also suggested that if you have questions prior to the Committee of the Whole meeting, send them in to Mrs. Devine, and we'll have the superintendent and Mrs. Monahan try to have them answered by the next time we meet, so we're not wasting time. And hopefully, we can go to the next step, whatever the step that is. So the motion's on the floor. What are the wishes?
Did the motion include inviting CFO Delarussso and Mr. Parent?
I don't think we should, well, if we're going to send in questions, I just want to make sure that we don't waste...
You have also time, too. This is not something that has to be done tomorrow.
Yeah.
Like I said, there's an other issue on the table that has to be resolved first before we can even go forward with these.
Yeah, I think...
So you've got time.
I think inviting Mr. Delarussso and the consultant back in at the next meeting, I think probably doesn't make much sense because we'll have those answers from, from either Mr. Delarussso or the consultant. If we have questions, of course, so that we have answers for the meeting. Everybody clear?
Yes.
Good. What are the wishes?
Motion's made and seconded?
It has been, yes. To refer to Committee of the Whole.
Correct.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Thank you. I forgot I had to call the vote. Thank you. I got so hung up. Next up, we have the FY '24 Budget Update, House Ways and Means, and this was released on Wednesday, April 12. Superintendent?
As you heard last night, the House Ways and Means released their budget on April 12, 2023, and there was no change. No changes to the House Ways and Means budget as far as the impact of Taunton Public Schools or City of Taunton, so just informational purposes only.
Thank you. Next up, we have the East Taunton Elementary School renaming update. Survey will close on Friday, May 5, 2023 at 4:00 p.m. So that members of the community better understand, the May 5 date was established over a month ago, so to give the public an opportunity to weigh in, and that will close at 4:00 p.m. And I was asked by various folks in the community, what is our timeline? I reminded them that based on what I'm understanding, there are multiple, multiple responses. I don't know what the numbers are. I don't think we should even announce that today. We'll wait till it closes. And there will be some work that needs to be done to compile it. So May 17, which would be our next school committee meeting, I don't think is reasonable to have all these these surveys and petitions and everything that's coming up to us compiled because we're very short-staffed in the business office and the superintendent's office. And then we have a little something going on on June 4, which is graduation. So realistically, I'm thinking mid-June, the second meeting of June, probably at the earliest, that we can even revisit, that we can even visit this. So just to keep the members at home, understanding that we're following a process and will eventually come up. Any action on that or any comments? Nope. Next up, we have the Taunton Alternative High School flashing update.
I'll refer that matter to Mrs. Monahan.
Okay, Mrs. Monahan.
Thank you, Dr. DeMello and Superintendent Cabral. In your packet, you'll also see a memo that was brought to us by our Director of Facilities, Mark Freitas. So at a recent long-range planning committee meeting, the members suggested that we contact an architect to review the project of the alternative high school flashing, which is the top part of the roof. And also, you can see in this memo, the Director of Facilities has some pictures for you and is specifically listing what, what each thing is, when I'm referring to these words, for flashing and existing items on the roof. So the Director of Facilities, Mark Freitas, went ahead and met with an architect to inspect the current flashing on the school building and asked for the recommendation of what TPS should do to the exposed flashing. The architect did suggest keeping the copper rain screen on the building and angled roof over the exist, and building an angled roof over the existing copper. He mentioned that leaving the existing copper adds another protection, a layer of protection against the elements. The architect does believe the copper rain screen was an afterthought and may have had some issues in the past with water penetrating the brick area above that detail. And you'll, again, you'll see in the attachment of the, of the pictures with the additional information. Mr. Freitas contacted a company for a building restoration and preservation, preservation company since 1932, and met with the Director of Operations. This Director of Operations suggested three options with the estimated cost. So the option one is to simply install new metal to fill in the missing section and clean the existing stone wall table. In this option, the new metal may not match the existing metal that is on the building. The estimated cost is about $200,000. Option two is to cover the existing metal with new metal, as well as clean the existing stone water table. There are many different metal colors and designs, and if a new design and color were selected, the price would increase. Please note that the existing metal may need to be removed once work is started. The removal would increase the possible $600,000 work by around $150,000, bringing the estimated cost of this option to $750,000. Option three is to prepare and coat the existing metal and clean the existing stone water table. Also, infilling the area that is missing with new metal to mimic the existing metal for aesthetics. Cost, estimated cost of this project option would be about $500,000. Mr. Freitas has also contacted other companies and is waiting for their recommended options and estimated costs, and he will provide more information to the committee once he receives it.
Thank you. Mr. Vieri, when we had the long-range planning subcommittee meeting, this was discussed, right? Did we have any action taken at that time? This was the action, okay. Now, what is expected of us as a committee? Are we supposed to act on this tonight?
I think he's going to bring back more information, so we'll wait for more information.
Okay, so we'll follow up with the long-range planning subcommittee and report back to us. Okay, great, so no action needed. We have an action item update next, and I do see something here that I don't know if we can remove. It's the renewal of public relations contract, request for proposal. Where do we stand with that, Superintendent? Okay, what are the wishes of the committee?
Motion to remove.
Second.
Motion to remove the renewal of public relations contract, request for proposal. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Eyes have it. Thank you. Mr. Vieri voting no, Mrs. Devine. Next up, we have, let's see, anything else on here that, I guess everything can stay? Maybe we want to change the status on the, refer solar on the schools to Committee of the Whole with a future date, so we can remove that date, April 6. I don't know, do we usually do that, take that date out of there?
Once we solidify a date, we'll update the status.
Okay, all right, great, but leave the item on there. Any other items? Yes, Mr. Pawlski?
Can we get an update on the set of the school committee retreat?
Oh.
Yes.
I'm happy you asked because, I pulled the email today. So I did reach out to Lisa Harrison regarding potential dates. So I don't know if you, I can send out a survey tomorrow, or we can reach out to you via text and email. So check your calendars tonight, please. She is available May 23 and May 24. That's a Tuesday and a Wednesday, and that is an off-school committee week, May 23, May 24. I also did ask for June dates as well. So if June 23 and 24 don't work, I did ask for June dates, and we can, we can circle back depending on what the response is on those two dates.
Mr. Fury?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So you know in advance, I know I will not be here the 7th, 8th, 9th, and 10th of June. I'll be missing the first June meeting. I'm going to be attending the New England Conference of the United Methodist Church in Manchester, New Hampshire, which is usually the second weekend in June, but it happens that the second weekend in June backs up to the first Wednesday in June.
Seven, eight, nine.
Seven, eight, nine, and 10.
That's fine. I can already state that I will not be here May 23 and 24. I will be escorting an alumni group overseas, so I don't return until the 28th.
Go look at it, June.
I mean, if you want to have the retreat without me? Yeah, well, I just want to make it known that I won't be here May 23 and 24. Okay, before we go into press time, I just wanted to give a little shout-out to, I guess it's Happy Teacher Appreciation Day was yesterday, but I feel we appreciate our teachers every day. So belated, Happy Appreciation Teacher Day to our educators and all the support staff throughout the district.
If I could, we'll be celebrating our staff next week.
Oh, next week?
We actually had a, we actually had a planning meeting today, and we're very excited about what we have hidden and tucked up our sleeves for next week. So it'll be something that everyone will be able to enjoy and watch.
Including the school committee?
Including the school committee.
That's wonderful. Thank you so much. Next up, we have press time. Any press? None? Oh, sorry. And before we conclude, there is a Taunton High School Internship Showcase, Class of 2023. This is going to take place on Tuesday, May 9 at 12:30. That's going to be the marketing folks. Wednesday, May 10 at 12:30, Broadcasting, CAD, Culinary, and Web Design. Two great events going on. Light refreshments and snacks will be served. I'm sure that will motivate some of us, like me, to be there. But if my schedule allows, I definitely will be at least at one of these two. So just for the public at home, May 9, Marketing, that's Tuesday, May 9 at 12:30, and Broadcasting, CAD, Culinary, Web Design, Wednesday, May 10 at 12:30. This all takes place in the Taunton High School cafeteria. And no press in the audience. Motion be in order to adjourn. Is there a second? Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Have a good night. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.